You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure discussed and outlined online. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period. All comments should be directed to the board. And we will now move on to our first item of business. And I would ask that you would rise and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item up for business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine items, such as approving invoices, approving minutes, et cetera. And they typically requires very little discussion or debate. We have consent agenda items A through F in front of the board tonight. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, and F as presented? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item D under the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor-
I'll be abstaining from this.
Thank you, Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three to zero with one abstention. Mr. Brewbaker abstaining. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, can you pull your mic closer, please?
Sure. Yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Up next, we have 924 Landisville Road, a sketch plan.
Yes, good evening. I'm Dave Keener, the project engineer, here on behalf of Mr. John Peachey, the owner of the project. And so we've gone through zoning process and submitted the sketch plan showing the proposed improvements. The ninety-six by fifty shed behind the existing house will be added, as well as some additional gravel area around the mulch bins. And there'll be parking, several tractor and trailers on the site as well. During the sketch plan, we've requested a waiver of land development. And that has gone before the planning commission and with a recommendation for approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Is this construction as part of a business expansion?
Yes, it's the tractor and trailer. It's to be able to have a space to park a tractor and trailer, to work on that and do maintenance activities. So that's the major part of the proposal for the building being added to the site.
And I suppose the planning commission, they've looked at the usage, and the usage is allowed on the property?
Yeah, we went through the zoning approval process as well for this particular use. And that was granted by the zoning hearing board.
Mr. Chairman, possibly Mr. Sturgis could add some highlights to the request. This is a bit unusual, that there's very little impact to the property and to the business.
Yes, Mr. Peachey wants that almost five thousand square foot whole building to his property. He's not increasing the number of trucks he runs. He's not increasing employee count or changing utilities or whatnot. And discussing this with Mr. Keener and our engineer, because of this fairly low impact, we had recommended going after this waiver of land development requirement, and instead doing a stormwater plan.
That's not even looked at at all different ways. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any questions?
No.
None?
Okay. And this is a single-stage development? It's not a phased development, correct?
That's correct. The improvements that will be added as part of it will be accounted for on the stormwater management plan.
I have no concerns or questions about it. Good. Any questions or concerns from the audience in reference to this plan? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the waiver of the land development plan submission requirement for 924 Landisville Road project, township file twenty-five oh seven dot oh one, condition upon the applicant submitting a stormwater management plan for review and approval, and any future improvements on the site being subject to the requirements of a final land development plan submission?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to give it to Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Luong Residence Stormwater Plan twenty-five oh six dot oh one.
Good evening. My name's Amanda Groff with Harbor Engineering. Here with me tonight is Andrew Luong. He's the owner of the property. It's a point six-nine acre lot off of Centerville Road that's vacant. It doesn't have an address yet, or maybe it's been assigned recently. And it's in the low-density residential district. And so as part of this plan, we're proposing a new house and a driveway and some retaining walls, as well as a subsurface stormwater bed to the rear of the lot to handle the stormwater. And we're requesting two modifications of the stormwater ordinance. The first one is regarding the maximum impervious loading ratio, five to one requirement, and to go up to six point one to one. And then the second one is regarding the pipe diameter for vehicular loading. The requirement is a fifteen-inch pipe, and we're requesting an eight-inch pipe. We did run all the calculations, and it's adequately sized for the water that will be getting to it. And I believe the letter from July first from DMA supported both of those modification requests.
What was the total square footage of impervious?
Seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you mean on the lot, or?
Yes, for the impervious. I know we had a small project, and I'm just wondering-
Yeah, the proposed total lot coverage is seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one.
Okay.
Don't recall what the cutoff is.
How big is the lot?
It's point six, I think. It was point six-nine acres?
Point six.
Right.
Mr. Sturgis, did you have any comments on this one?
I got booted. There we go. Now we got him. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, the cutoff for the small project is five thousand square feet. He was over this by almost three thousand. So he had to do a stormwater plan.
Okay, understood. That was just the reason for my question.
But I did hear that you've petitioned for a reduction in the size of a pipe of some type?
Correct. So there's- There's one inlet in the driveway that's proposed. And it's catching a pretty limited drainage area, basically the driveway and a small portion of Centerville Road. It's labeled as IA one in the driveway there. And then there's a pipe that goes- Let me get myself oriented here. It goes planned north, but it's, yeah, kind of at an angle there and goes around to the back of the bed. So part of it is in vehicular loading. That's what's required to be fifteen-inch. But the hundred-year storm can handle that in an eight-inch pipe. So that's why we're requesting that modification.
I guess my question to staff would be, how did Centerville Road do over the recent storms that we've had? Was there any flooding at all in this area?
This is on a severe hill.
Hmm?
This is on a severe hill.
It is, okay.
Yeah, as you're approaching Centerville, it's maybe the second house, second lot, third lot?
It's the empty lot on the west side of the hill, where the tractor-trailer is jackknife in the winter.
No, it did not have any impact of flooding. Our concern was the back part of that, which is the drainage way that goes to Harrisburg Pike. But they've addressed all of their concerns in terms of stormwater needs.
Okay.
And our engineer did look at it and recommended granting that as well.
Yeah, I can fill. So yes, we had a conversation actually earlier this week at MS4 meeting with DMA. And I had some concern about this property just because of where it's located, and stormwater obviously is running downhill. And if I lived at the next property below this one, I'd be very concerned to make sure everyone was making the correct calculations. And, you know, I'm a little concerned with reducing the size of anything when it comes to, like I said, if I would be the person living directly downstream from this property. So I'm not a, obviously I'm not an engineer, and DMA seemed to be comfortable with where everything was, you know, on this drawing. But again, I just have concerns about making sure that this property remains in compliance, especially with erosion and sedimentation control during construction. I've been involved in a couple of issues, situations, where that was required but wasn't always followed, or it was left go during the course of construction. And lo and behold, there was a storm, and there was damage done to an adjacent property. So I just have a lot of concerns about this because of where it is, obviously. So I just wanted to bring that up publicly and make sure that everyone's just doing their job and protecting those properties that are directly below there. And that storm, what was mentioned with the Harrisburg Pike storm, there's a ravine right behind there that actually is on our radar to have some work done on it. So even more reason why we don't want any more coming down there than what we're already battling. A lot of erosion and runoff in that area, you know, without this new construction. So, thank you.
The inlet is in a sumped area, too, in the driveway, which will further ensure that everything gets to that pipe and around back to the infiltration bed off-site, or before it goes in the ground.
And just so everybody's clear, right now, there's no stormwater management plan there, correct?
Correct.
And in theory, this is going to actually improve the situation once it's fully constructed. Okay. I just wanted to make that point, that I think after they're done, this will be a better situation than what we have now.
Can't ask for anything more than that. Agreed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve modification waiver request one and conditional approval for request two for the Luong Residence Stormwater Management Plan, project township file twenty-five dash oh six dot oh one, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brewbaker. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Little Conestoga Creek Foundation.
Good evening. My name is Jim Schultz. And on behalf of the Steyman Foundation and the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, I am the project manager for the Little Conestoga Creek Blue-Green Connector Project. The Blue-Green Connector Project is a combination stream restoration, which is the blue element, and an ADA accessible walking bike trail, which is the green element, along three and a half miles of the Little Conestoga Creek from Marietta Avenue north to the covered bridge at Shriner Station Road. So this is the project here in front of you. The project also includes Dorrit Park, which we'll discuss in a few minutes. With me tonight is Brent Good, who is a senior project manager for ELA, our engineering company, responsible for the planning, design, and construction of the trail and trailheads for the trail elements of the Blue-Green Connector. Brent is going to assist me with the presentation tonight and any questions you may have. We're here to discuss the segment of the trail that would utilize Farmingdale Road going under Route thirty and onto West Roseville Road. I can't, my pointer doesn't work. But you can see the darker line. Those are the roads, so that's West Roseville, up to Good Drive, and then under Route thirty, and then Farmingdale. So this is the area that we're going to be talking about in this agenda item. We're here to discuss the segment of the trail that would utilize Farmingdale Road, going under Route thirty and onto West Roseville Road. So we are requesting that portions of these township roads be used for the trail. And in order to do that, we need legal easements, which is what we are requesting from you tonight. For this phase of the trail, this segment here, we are requesting funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for approximately $250,000, matched by $250,000 from the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation. These funds will be used for such things as pave markings, retaining walls, fencing, and signage for the trail. In order to receive these Pennsylvania DCNR funds, we must show that we have received a legal set of easements from the township so that we can place the trail within the segments of the township right away along Farmingdale Road, under Route thirty, and along West Roseville Road. So I'm going to turn this over to Brent right now and just show you a little bit more information.
Yeah, this map is good right now. Thank you, Jim. So this whole area, this length, is just over a half a mile, starting there at the east side of the Miller Farm on Farmingdale Road, right there where the hand is. And then the pink areas represent the township's right-ofways or public roads. And so the pink is the township. So there's Farmingdale Road for approximately 400 feet. Then we come down onto Pendot right-ofway, which is a stormwater management base in a berm. Pendot is receptive to working with us for that. Then we go on to the crossings lands, or part of the high realty property, for about 150 feet. Then we go under Farmingdale Road for about 65 feet, through the right-ofway, underneath the west cell of the bridge, which is the dry side of the bridge, where the base flow of the creek is on the east side. Then we go independent right-ofway again, Route thirty, under the Route thirty bridge. We come out on the north side, just on the south side of the old mill, onto West Roseville Road township right-ofway, and proceed all the way, in this case, towards the west, all the way up towards Good Drive, utilizing that portion where we're going to be doing a phase one trail here, a portion with a mini trailhead very soon, this year. But again, that overall length's just over half a mile. Then if we go to the next slide, it gets into more detail specifically in terms of exactly what we're looking for in terms of easement area on the Farmingdale Road right-ofway. You have a certain portion of the right-ofway. It's 33 feet wide. And then there's another portion that's 50 feet wide. We have met with the staff on site, have corresponded with them numerous times as to what the appropriate easement area should be. We'd like it to be a little larger at this point to provide us flexibility. We've had provided some sketches to the staff to review potential design, but that design is yet to be determined. And so it's best at this time for the DCNR grant to allow us some flexibility and have a larger area to make sure that we have that design flexibility. So you can see the hatched area there. It's about 2,200 square feet of the Farmingdale Road area. And then the next slide is the specific easement area under the Farmingdale Bridge. And it would go under the bridge at an angle, basically between the concrete bridge abutment on the left or west side, and the other bridge abutment on the east side. And then the total width, which is 50 feet. But because it's angled, it's about 66 feet. Then we come into the Route thirty right-ofway, and that's Pendot, of course. Then once we pop out on the north side, we can go to the next slide, which shows the exhibit, easement exhibit for West Roseville Road. So this total length is about 1,800 linear feet. Again, it's a township public road. It's basically a 40-foot right-ofway from, we'd be looking to have an easement of this area of the road from the mill on the right or east side, in this case, all the way up to Good Drive. We're going to Good Drive, just again, to give us flexibility in case we ever wanted to make a connection across Good Drive into Women's and Babies or the health campus at that location. So just to say again, these easements are the total right-ofway width. So then again, we can have design flexibility, and that'll be determined in the future. Yep, thanks, Jim.
In order to move ahead with our application for funding from the Pennsylvania DCNR, we are requesting that you take official action tonight to grant trail easements within these portions of the rights-ofways of these township roads.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, a question. I'm going to use this as a learning experience. You know, Jim, you've been here several times. I know we're always very supportive of your projects, and, you know, the township is, you know, excited about these improvements. But I'm just looking to learn something. Like, what's the downside of granting easements for a project that we support? Is there any insight or things I should know about that from anybody?
Well, I think just like any easement that you grant, that we're giving permission for things for it to be utilized for construction to take place on it, for the public to walk on it. So for us, representing the public from the township perspective, granting an easement for something of this use or this nature, I don't see a downside.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Nor do I. I don't see any downside here. You know, this is a project that we have been fully supportive of almost since inception. Jim, in your group, you've done a great job, done a lot of good work so far. If this would help in your efforts to complete the process, I would be in favor of providing the vote for the easement.
Have we received any feedback, positive or negative, from any of the adjacent property owners?
I did have a conversation with Mr. Ashley today. Eric Ashley, I think you're here. There you are.
Are leaves are here? And we'll get to them in a minute. We'll open it up for a public comment here regarding this in just a minute. Just a quick question. How long have you guys been working on this?
Me personally, seven years. And then the team, six and a half years.
Okay. So it's been in the works for seven years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we've had to do is we've had to get easements, speaking of easements, from all the property owners up and down the stream and for the trail. And so that took years. It took years to get those easements. So we negotiated with all the property owners up and down the stream. In turn, you can't do something like this without getting financial resources. So that's why we're here tonight, to get 250,000, to match 250,000. So it's taken us a long time to get, because there's no one place that you can just go pick off the shelf and come up with $20 million. It doesn't work that way.
Right.
Six and a half, seven years.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, just to follow up with what Mr. Wigglesworth asked. Can you identify, like, what percent of the project is completed as far as the trails?
As a matter of fact, when are we going to have the website done? About another week or two? Yeah, about another two weeks, you'll see that all on a website. But to give you, there's different phases, different parts of this. So for example, the planning and design work, it's about 90%, 85, 90% done. Then you have other parts that, for example, on the stream restoration, about 50% of that's done. We've had six segments, and three of them are done. So you have different aspects of this. The trail, for example, supervisor is going to be started this year. So we're going to have two segments of the trail started this year. So I can't give you an overall, but that gives you a flavor for what's been done so far.
Thank you. And one more question. You've talked about grants here in the past couple of years. Yeah. Are you still awaiting word on a lot of your grants?
Unfortunately, as Cindy knows, we got rejected for the one that we came here, I think, back in December, November, December, for $5.5 million. That would have helped a lot. So we're plugging away. We're going to go after another grant for a million and a half dollars. I'll be here in another six months, asking for support for that. So the point being is, is that we've won some, and we've not won some.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll open it up to audience.
Eric Ashley, I live at 1048 West Roseville Road. And I appreciate your service to the community and the staff, their work also. And I appreciate that.
Can we pull up that address on the screen?
This is great, that the public has a chance to comment. I really appreciate that. That doesn't mean I enjoy this. So please bear with me. I have spoken several times at township meetings about this project and the trail. I've shared my concerns numerous times. I think the last time I did was when there was a request to sign off on a letter. They were requesting, I think, federal funding for this part of the project. I guess that didn't go through. I guess that didn't go through. So I see some new faces from other times I was here, so I don't want to take too much time, but my family and I, we have, we have concerns. We do see a downside to an easement. Apart from the quality of life, which will affect us quite a bit, my wife and I moved back to the farm and we thought we had boundaries and it was secluded. And a trail down the road along our property is going to change our way of life and will change our quality of life. But that's our problem, I guess. I think we should talk about public safety. I don't know if anybody has been down this road at all this summer. There was a mention of the dry side, the dry cell of the Route 30 Bridge. I don't know that that's been dry since April. That is wet. It's, it does not dry out. There's no sunshine. It's mud. People, people I expect will fall and hurt themselves. The same can be said for the drainage way between Route 30 and the mill that was mentioned. That's a wet area that does not dry out readily. And then, of course, people could get trapped because of the floodwater. Two Mondays ago, the storm we had, 4.3 inches in six hours, I think that's a little less than a 50-year storm, that exceeded the capacity of the bridge in that it was, I'm going to say, at least six inches above the bottom quarter of the bridge. Anything done with a trail, if there are railings or anything like that that could trap debris and reduce the capacity of the bridge is a huge concern of us and others. So public safety, I think this is a dangerous proposition. Ms. Schweitzer mentioned that I had conversation with her, and there's some question on the part of my family whether the West Roseville Road was ever dedicated and whether it is indeed a township road. And by that, I mean the entire length of it that would, where the trail is proposed. I guess there would need to be some time to find the resolution where it was dedicated, but the recollection of our family is not clear on that. We don't remember that. And a specific question I might have is how the trail would get from the Route 30 Bridge to West Roseville Road. Do you know the exact path for that? It was cut off on the drawing.
Mr. Ashley, yeah. So we do have drawings, preliminary drawings of that. It's all within the either Pendot right of way or West Roseville right of way. I need to be ADA compliant, so it's no more than 5% on a linear longitudinal slope. So coming out of that west cell, would turn left and then traverse up kind of in a ramp fashion. And there will not be any railings in this area whatsoever, not even under the bridge. Under the bridge, we're looking to make that entirely concrete under there, possibly riprap on both sides, but to your point about mud and water and so forth, that is a concern. But no railing, so it'd be basically a ramp, but ADA compliant gradual ramp, if you want to call it that, without any railings. More details to follow in terms of the, again, we do have preliminary drawings of that, that we will be developing.
In my experience, mud and wheelchairs are not a good combination. I guess a concern of ours, if this would go through, is how to keep people from wandering on our property. People come, head north through the west cell of the bridge. There's, there's nice open meadow. There's an old historic building. People already are wandering around our place, and we're friendly people, but we don't need the whole community there. So there's that. And then there's also increasingly, we have all kinds of people on our place. I've had firewood stolen. I've had people spend the night in our chicken house. And there's just more and more, and that comes with the world we live in, but more people will know about our little place if they're walking up and down the trail all the time, and there will be more of that. People will, they don't know we're there now, but more people will know and more people will come and more people will do things that will require township services from the police force and all of that. So, yeah, we have concerns. There is a downside to granting the easement. I think I heard that most of you seem to be in favor of it, but as a family and speaking for my neighbors also, we have concerns. I guess that's all I have to say now. Oh, yeah, the, whether or not the road was dedicated, I think is a big question. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. And Mr. Ashley, I don't want to, didn't mean to trivialize that when I said there was no downside. I mean, I do hear what you're saying, and I understand that this will, no doubt, be a change when, if and most likely when it does happen and goes through. Have you talked about things that could be done with those people that are putting it through to help mitigate and create some privacy for you and keep people off of your private property? Have there been any of those type of discussions?
Yes, they have talked to us. It was a number of years ago, and, you know, our focus really is that we don't want this, okay? But they were kind and said, you know, they told us they would do things. But my concern is anything down in the floodplain that's a fence is just going to trap debris. I am glad with the new plan that there's not a bridge planned to cross the Little Conestoga downstream from the Route 30 Bridge. That would just cause a lot of blockage and additional flooding, but, so I'm happy about that. But any fence down in the floodplain would be a disaster for maintenance and even public safety, too.
But there's other things. There's plantings and there's...
There are plantings. We can grow a good crop of bernies on poison ivy. So, no, so there are those things, but in my experience, signs don't keep people off anymore. That's the world we live in. So plantings would be nice, but I don't know that that's much of a deterrent personally, so.
I would just encourage you to continue dialogue with them. I think they're very reasonable people. I think they want to do well by our whole community and by you and your neighbors as well. I don't think they're looking to do something shoddy and ram something through. But I do understand your concerns, and if I, I can see, living there, family homestead, this is a big change, so I do empathize with that. You brought up another question that we looked at right before the meeting started. It's the first I've heard of it, that we may not, that you believe that the road was never dedicated. We, Mrs. Schweitzer, do you want to?
So we did have a quick conversation with our solicitor, Susan Pfeifer, and we basically explained where we're at and the discussion that I had with Mr. Ashley earlier. And she indicated to us that we would be free and clear to move forward, that it would be her recommendation, that if you so chose, you could move forward with the easement.
Yeah. So we explained that to her, and there wasn't a concern on her part of whether we had the authority to grant the easement or whether we were in fact, whether it was dedicated to us or not. So, you know, again, I just wanted to make the board aware of that conversation to take place before a meeting.
Mr. Good, can you show on the map like where the trail is in relationship to the house?
So there were prior discussions with the Blue Green Corridor as well, I believe, with Mr. Ashley, that Mr. Ashley was concerned about where the trail would go, and the discussion was that it would be on the Route 30 side. Now, the trail hasn't been fully defined yet, which is why they are looking for flexibility, but the township has made it very clear that that trail needs to be on the Route 30 side, not the interior side to the Ashleys.
Okay, so I see...
Right here at the, at the turn, is right where we're looking to connect to the, if you can't hear, so you can, you can see the edge of the...
Mr. Good, if you could do it that way. We have one here that might work.
It's working, I guess you say.
Right here, right here is the bridge cell, and then we come out, turn sharp left, and we come up and we connect right in that turn right there, and then we proceed this way. And as Mrs. Schweitzer was saying about the trail for the pedestrians, we're proposing it will be on the Route 30 side.
Of Roseville Road?
Yes. And then it continues in this S-turn. The road actually widens a little more here, those three, the S-turn. And then right in this area, where we're looking to turn right and bump into the small trailhead and the Phase One portion of the trail. We'll cross Harrisburg Pike with an updated pedestrian signal, and then we utilize Woodcrest Villa's existing 12-foot wide, actually, it's the township's right of way, that you've already granted an easement for that portion of the project, that existing access drive there on Woodcrest Villa. It's 12 feet wide, and that's our width of our trail. And so the Phase One will terminate there, right there where the marker is, right before the covered bridge.
Thank you.
And again, could you pull up Mr. Ashley's property? The red dot?
Mennonite Home, Trillium Place. He's basically, portion he owns the stream, but the boundary line, but it isn't the boundary line, it's a municipal boundary line between you and Mannheim Township. But Mr. Ashley owns a significant portion there. Basically, that whole, whole went from the stream on the east right side all the way to the west side and up to the S-turn. He owns, that's his property.
And how close to the, his property, his home, will the trail, I mean, it'll be on the outskirts of the property, basically, right?
We can get that exact distance. I don't know the exact distance. We know that the road itself is 20 feet wide with a 40-foot right of way. I would assume about 100 feet or so from where the trail will be.
Are you able to indicate approximately where the floodplain falls? Is the flood, I assume the floodplain is also on the west side of that road? Is the road in the floodplain?
His house is not quite in the floodplain, but very shortly thereafter, as you proceed over, up, it becomes into the floodplain. The mill itself is almost really in, on the edge of the floodplain. Mr. Ashley's residence, as far as I remember on the mapping, is not. He could speak to that in terms of flood events, but a good portion of that property to the top side of the sheet is in the floodplain beyond his residence. Part of the parking lot of Mennonite Home is in the floodplain.
Mr. Ashley, you wanted to say something? I'm sorry, could you, we needed to come to the mic. Thank you.
The bend in West Roseville Road there, southwest of the mill, that is in the floodplain. It's frequently flooded. The area between Route 30 and there is frequently flooded. In fact, there would have been probably over six feet of water in that area two weeks ago. And then the road was certainly flooded then, and I believe once since then, last Wednesday maybe, the road was flooded there. And if, if, I don't want to get too much into past history, but as far as my family's property, which is a homestead and it goes back years, when I look at the things that have been done that have affected this small piece of property, it really turns my stomach. The amount of development and impervious area in the watershed, a lot of it prior to stormwater ordinance, the flooding is just ridiculous. And the Route 30 Bridge is undersized, and basically, we've become a de facto stormwater basin for, for the watershed. And that's a hard pill to swallow, and now here we go again, but it's not water, it's people, so.
Is there anyone else from the audience that wish to speak? Anyone on Zoom? Gentlemen, did you have anything else to add? Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, just one more question. Mr. Ashley, is there any compromise that you could see beyond like, just don't do it?
Okay. Well, gentlemen, we have a question before us tonight, and we've heard from the applicant, we've also heard from Mr. Ashley, and I do empathize with Mr. Ashley. This project has been a long time in the making. I do believe it will be very much in the interest of public good. My hope is that at some point, you guys will continue to work with Mr. Ashley, and knowing who you are, I believe that you will, to mitigate as much as possible. I know it won't be a complete mitigation, but as much as possible.
If I could just interrupt, we have met with the Ashley family at least three times about this, and we understand his concerns. They expressed tonight, and they're, so they're not new to us, and we intend to try to address them.
Appreciate that. With that being said, is there a motion to approve the following agreement of easements in connection with the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation Blue Green Corridor project? Linear Park easement for trail along Farmingdale Road? And Linear Park easement for trail along West Roseville Road?
So moved.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, four to zero. Is there a motion to approve the trailhead improvement agreement for the Noel Dorwick Park project, which assigns cost sharing between the township and Little Conestoga Creek Foundation?
Mr. Wigglesworth, did you want to have some discussion on that? It's really a different project, but...
Sure. I'm sorry, just getting ahead of myself. Thank you for keeping me aligned here.
I mean, we do have a screenshot that...
The votes on these, that's very extremely helpful. Well, as we...
Mr. Holtz, could you give me just a second? We've lost video, and so if you give me just a second to see if I can reset this camera quick so they can see you online. quick so they can see you online. Okay, it doesn't look like it's an easy fix, so they can still hear us online, so go ahead. Thank you.
You good?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so the second item for your consideration tonight is a cost-sharing agreement for the costs of improvements to Dorwick Park. Again, Brent is here, Grant is here tonight to assist me in explaining details for these improvements. As you know, several years ago, East Hemphill Township received funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to make improvements to Dorwick Park. At approximately the same time, the foundation's staff was considering whether we should include a portion of our trail to include Dorwick Park and make Dorwick Park into the main trailhead for the connector project. We talked to the township's staff, and there was a mutual interest in including not only the trail to the park, but also making additional improvements to the park that the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation would pay for. So we began working with the township's staff, their engineering consultants, and one of your supervisor committees about an overall improvement plan for Dorwick Park. About a year ago, we introduced Emily Landis to this Dorwick Park planning process. Emily is the former executive director of the Science Factory, and now is on the staff of the Steinman Foundation. As a result, Emily has brought educational and art elements to the Dorwick Park plans, as well as for the rest of the Blue Green Connector project. As a result of these planning sessions, it was agreed that the township would facilitate the Dorwick Park improvements with coordinated planning, permitting, and contract bidding, and be responsible for the fundamental improvements to the park. In turn, the foundation would provide, the foundation would provide additional improvements, such as an expanded paved parking area, stormwater management facilities, and a sharing in the cost of the pavilion. In addition, Emily's art and educational elements, such as an information kiosk, a demonstration path, a labyrinth, benches, bike racks, and signage would be part of the park's improvements. All of Emily's programming would be paid by the foundation. So I'd like to have Brent just take a moment and just show you a few of the plans, and there they go. Go ahead.
Thank you, Jim. Just quickly. So, you know, the park exists now, obviously, it's a gravel driveway and a gravel parking lot. We're looking to pave it, asphalt pave it, and there's approximately 80 parking spaces, and some of which are designated for our trail use, which are more in this area. And actually, there's an area here for a school bus pull-off as well. And of course, a pavilion that we're going to share with the township in its cost. The township's going to build a playground here that's fenced in. And then this will be the beginning of our trail, so we consider this the, the main trailhead because of the size of this facility. But there'll be an informational kiosk here, you can't see it, but there'll be bike racks, there'll be benches, there'll be educational signage, there's going to be a demonstration trail here, shown in white, going around at different stations of, of opportunity of education and demonstration, and all these native meadows and native landscaping as well. So very excited about this project partnering with the township, it's going to be a great asset to the community, a lot of great opportunity here, really appreciate your cooperation.
So in order to memorialize these improvements to Dorwick Park, a cost-sharing agreement was developed between the township and the foundation to outline that the township would facilitate all the construction of all the improvements of the park, and that the elements that were added by both the foundation and Emily's education and our programs would be constructed by the township and paid by the foundation. You have a cost-sharing agreement before you tonight that outlines the plans and the costs for the improvements to Dorwick Park, and how those improvements would be paid for, and we're here to answer any questions you have about that cost-sharing agreement. We would respectfully request an approval of this cost-sharing agreement by the Board of Supervisors tonight.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
No, no real questions, but, you know, we've obviously looked at this Noel Dorwick project for quite some time in our park and recreation meetings. It's come together, you know, very well. We're appreciative of the support that your organization is going to provide us. I don't see any issues at all at, at this point. I assume that our council has reviewed this agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm fine.
Yeah, yes, my understanding is this project started this week, did it, or?
Yes.
Yes. So, and we've talked about it quite a bit, so like, any, anything new that we haven't talked about before, this is just a formalization of what we've been discussing for a year? Is that? Okay, thank you. Good.
I guess for me, I'd like to have assurances that the Brubaker plaque remains at the same location as it currently is. I hope there's no plans to, to relocate.
Mr. Brubakers, there's a plaque right about this location near the eastern property line, so we have no plans to do anything with it.
Okay.
As far as we're concerned, it can remain.
We know it's there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not in the way, or.
Yeah, my family put that there, so. I, I have some vested interest in, in making, to make sure that it stays there, if possible.
And Ms. Switzer, for, could you just highlight the numbers a little bit here for us? Hate to put you on the spot, but.
So the, the project has been bid, so we have concrete numbers. The total project cost is $1.263, and the contribution to, from the foundation will be $359,000, a significant contribution.
And what was the grant that we received?
The grant is $253,000.
Thank you.
And we, backing up, we got two grants. One is a 253, the second one was a legislative grant for 350. And then we have a match on the DCNR grant.
So the point I was trying to make is there's, without the grant money, this would not be happening. It's a significant amount of grant money and a significant contribution from the Blue Green Corridor to bring this about. And we happen to be the beneficiary of that. So I just wanted to make that, that clear to our residents. Is there any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Any other comments from the board? Oh, okay. Well, then I'm going to continue with my motion that I was ready to make. Ten minutes ago, sorry, gentlemen. Motion to approve the trailhead improvement agreement for the Noel Dorwick Park project, which assigns cost sharing between the township and Little Conestoga Creek Foundation.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Brubaker, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And gentlemen, thank you so much for your work. You, you guys have been all-stars, really have, thank you so much.
Thank you for your.
Great project.
Thank you, appreciate it, appreciate the support, thank you.
Up next, we have Hempfield Water Authority Board resignation.
So we were advised by the Water Authority that there was a resignation on their board, you have that in your packet, Mr. Robert Kreider. They are also recommending the appointment of John Weil, who is a local plumber, and kind of fits into their framework of what they need on their board.
And just for explanation purposes, everybody kind of has a specialty on the board, correct? And.
That's how they function.
Right. So they, everybody brings something to the table, is what they're looking for?
Yes. And Mr. Kreider's appointment would run out the end of the year, so Mr. Weil would be up for a reappointment January.
Any discussion on the board from this?
None.
Any from the audience? Or Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Robert Kreider and appoint John Weil to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Kreider until January of 2026?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries four to zero, thank you. National Retail Properties Trust Settlement Agreement, Right-of-Way Centerville Road Project.
So this is, is completing some of the outstanding items on the Centerville Road project. We had gone through the right-of-way process and purchased right-of-way where it was necessary. There were a few properties that we had to make the deposit into the proponentary's office, and they had the opportunity to fight that up to five years from that date. The National Retail Properties Trust, which is the Bob Evans property, had, had reached out. We were scheduled for a board review. We negotiated with the owner. We had agreed on a, well, we had a contribution to the proponentary's office of $123,000. They were seeking more. We settled at $177,297. This settlement recognizes that negotiation. Susan was involved, as well as the appraiser that we had checked the property.
Any questions?
And we had budgeted what for this?
This is an 80/20 split, we'll eventually get 80% of it back from the state. Yeah.
80% of 177?
We already got 80% of the 123, it would be 80% of the 54.
Understood, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board on this?
No.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Zoom? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve signature on the settlement agreement with National Retail Property Trust to finalize right-of-way for Centerville Road Project?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brubaker, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero, thank you. Up next, we have the Dream Park Rubber Replacement Quote Approval for River Valley.
So the Dream Park rubber is about eight years old, it hasn't fared very well. We need to replace the entire thing to prevent any falls or slips. We have gotten a quote from River Valley, $147,585. They are a CoStarz vendor. We are also familiar with their work, as they did the ramp in the center of the park. That's already been replaced by them. So we feel comfortable in recommending that the board approve this budgeted item.
Any questions or comments on this, on the board?
I did have a discussion with Perry about this, I understand what's going on here, does that make sense to me?
Yeah, we've talked about it before at prior meetings and gotten updates on this along the way, so. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, Zoom? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize staff to enter into contract with River Valley in the amount of $147,585 to replace the rubber matting at the Dream Park, conditioned on the project being completed after September 1st?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brubaker, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, motion carries four to zero, thank you. Noise ordinance variance?
We've once again received a request from the Ann Barshinger Cancer Institute located at 2102 Harrisburg Pike at the Penn Medicine outpatient pavilion for a noise ordinance variance for their annual fundraising gala, which benefits the cancer center. The event will be held on Saturday, September 20th, from 5:30 to 10:30 p.m., and they've requested a noise ordinance variance from 9:00 p.m. to 10:30 to allow for their festivities there to occur. There are no residential properties impacted. It has occurred many times in the past and has never been an issue, so it would be staff's recommendation that you grant the noise ordinance variance for September 20th, 2025, for the Ann Barshinger Biennial Fundraising Gala.
Any comments or questions from the board on this?
No. No.
Were the event, any comments, questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none. Is there a motion to grant the Ann B. Barshinger Cancer Patient Support Fund a variance to the noise ordinance to allow the biannual fundraiser gala to be held September 20th, 2025, allowing the time to extend until 10:30 p.m.?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero, thank you. Special event approval?
This event is the Rekindled Nurse 5K to be held at the Junction Center. This is an annual event, has been held in the past without any issue. It is scheduled for September 20th, excuse me, 2025. It will occur in the morning, as per our request to them for their 5Ks. The roadway will be closed for just under an hour. Only Junction Road from the area of Warehouse Road to Landisville Road, traffic control will be provided by constables, and a roadway indemnification agreement has been signed by the applicant. So it would be staff's recommendation that you approve the utilization of Junction Road between Landisville and Auction Road on September 20th in the morning for use by the Junction Center for a 5K race, and permit the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement. It has already been approved by Penn Township for their portion of Junction Road.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
None.
Nope.
Okay, any from the audience? Any from Zoom? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to grant special event approval to the Rekindled Nurse 5K to be held at the Junction Road Center on September 20th, 2025, and authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification agreement?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
West Hempfield Township and East Hempfield Township Traffic Signal Agreement.
So the township has agreements with Manor Township and East Pete Borough regarding the shared signals that we have. We never had one for West Hempfield. It was understood that West Hempfield would take care of Church and Stony Battery and, no, opposite. We would take care of West, Stony Battery and Church, and West Hempfield would take care of the other one, which is at Marietta and Stony. What has occurred with the Centerville Road project is that the controller at that intersection at Marietta has been changed, so that it talks to the signals that are going towards the city on Marietta. The controller that is, was used is not compatible with what West Hempfield has been using. And Mr. Stern, the manager at West Hempfield, has asked if something could be done, and this was the easiest method of doing so, which is, means that we switch. They pay their, their PPNL bill, we pay ours for the signal, we share in all costs, which is how it's always understood.
Okay. So if I understood that correctly, are we switching intersections?
Yes, we will not be responsible for, or take the lead with Stony and Marietta.
Okay. And that does kind of make sense to me with the Centerville Road project. And I guess we might want to throw in, I hate to give Andrew any credit, but we did get some grant funding from them this year, right? That.
We did, we did, for the Nissley Basin.
So they've been, they've been a very good neighbor, so.
Yes, they have.
All right. All right, sounds very reasonable to me. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? Zoom? All right. Is there a motion to authorize entering into a traffic signal agreement with West Hempfield Township to identify lead municipalities for the shared signals at Stony Battery Church and Stony Battery and Marietta Avenue?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brubaker, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero, thank you. Up next, Resolution 2025-19, Declaration of Intent to Submit a Multimodal Transportation Funding Request to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Church Street Bridge Replacement Project.
So the Centerville Road was our biggest project for a number of years, and that's winding down. We now have a problem with the Church Street Bridge. The typical inspection process is every two years for bridges. That one is down to six months. So the bridge is deteriorating. We need to start planning. It's going to be a major project because of the Amtrak line that runs underneath it. The engineer has been looking around for grant funding. This is what he has suggested. This is the first one. There are more to come. The project cost is roughly 3.2 million. What is of key importance to the board is that as this progresses along, the match on these is 30%. So we're looking at either $700,000 or $900,000 of match if we can't find additional funds. This is the first stage. You'll see this again. If we do get awarded, you'll have to approve that. So it's a process, and this is the first step.
So, and typically, there's going to be avenues of funding that may or not, that are not guaranteed, but could be available to us, correct?
Right. The first step is getting this big chunk and then looking to maybe the Metropolitan Planning Group at the county level for additional funds or other grants. Yes.
Ms. White, this would only affect, or this would only be, we're only talking about the Amtrak Bridge, not the 283 Bridge, correct?
Cross Church.
Yeah, or is there just one bridge there?
There's one. I think it's.
It's not two bridges?
Well, I'm looking at the photo now. I believe there's two.
I thought there was two.
There is two bridges there. One is owned by.
Perry is answering your question.
Yeah, the one, the one is owned by Pendot, the one over 283. They take care of that one. Unfortunately, years gone by, the railroad has dumped all the bridges on the township. So the first bridge that you encounter while leaving Landisville is the Amtrak Bridge, and that is our responsibility.
Okay, that answers my question. That's what I thought. Was there only the one over the Amtrak?
Thank you for the clarification, actually.
Thank you.
Thinking it was all one. Any other questions or comments?
And I guess it goes without saying that there'd be some coordination between the construction of these bridges being at the same time.
The one across 283 is not projected to be changed.
It's not?
No. I don't know the condition of it. It's a good question to ask Pendot as we move along.
Do that probably subsequent to this one being finished, and then we'll close that one down.
That would be first because they own it and they don't have to deal with the Amtrak.
That would just make sense.
Okay, just think.
Yeah, it would be nice to know the status of where that is.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
Process. I would think that they would be similar in age.
Yeah, close the road, and it's closed. Might as well do it at the same time, if you possibly coordinate that.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize submission of a multimodal transportation funding request to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the Church Street Bridge Replacement Project?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett is there? Second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have some items under Old Business. Fire emergency service costs. The 250th Anniversary of the United States. And the Steiman Foundation Quarterly Report for the Blue Green Quarter Project, which we really got a big update here tonight when they went through. Did anyone have, wish to discuss any of those old business items right now?
I will, we'll just add that the 250th segment is on the website. So anyone that's interested can submit their comments there.
And we are hearing from people.
We've had two so far, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we have a Parks and Recreation meeting this month. So hopefully, we can make some progress on how to approach that.
Okay. Great. Good stuff. Under, or any comments or questions from the audience on those items or Zoom? None. Under New Business, we have the six-month budget actual summary that was sent out. The 2025 budget across all funds appears to be holding for both incomes and expenses of what we were forecast for before. I'd like to wait to get into a lengthy discussion. If anybody had any comments or questions they want to ask Cindy or staff on that weekend right now, but I'd like to have a little more time to digest it and maybe get into it at our first August meeting.
Okay. Great.
Yes.
Okay. Traffic Commission meeting, there was.
Excuse me, Scott. Yeah, just a new business item. Mr. and Mrs. Ralph are in the audience here, and I talked to them about a situation, and I'll just ask you to bring that up during public comment instead of new business. Just wanted to mention that.
Okay. And since there was no Traffic Commission meeting tonight, there's no report, so we're going to move on to public comment. So if you want to come on up, yes, please.
I'm Ken Ralph. My wife and I, Judy, live at 1861 Wickersham Lane. And we're affected by the pork chop on Farmingdale Road. And as a result, we now take, in order to get home when we go to Park City or anywhere there, we go down Harrisburg Pike to the lighted Good Drive, and we have to turn left there. And what we, what I asked, I asked Cindy, and she was kind enough to let me know about the project. We understood that there was going to be a flashing left light, flash arrow left, and there isn't there now. And Cindy was able to say that you had a grant that you received for, to change it from a loop to a radar system and stuff like that. But like even today, when we went there, there were four cars blocked up on a red light. They could have turned left. There was no reason not to. And they had had to wait until the light changed, the next light changed. If there was a left-hand turn light, that would have alleviated all that. And so what I'm requesting, or that you consider, or when the Traffic Commission considers, to add to the, to the current updates, a left-hand turn flashing light. And I think that would make a whole lot of difference. So that was, I hope that, I don't know, I mean, it wouldn't be here, but whether it would be something that the Traffic Commission would be looking at.
Thank you. Ms. White, is it the Traffic Commission or is it here that it's?
It's really up to the board. Eventually, it has to come back to the board because it would involve expense.
And could you, I think prior to the meeting, you told me again, how much expense would it be?
So I did reach out to the engineer, inquired what would be involved. The, would require a new signal head, which is not part of the current contract. That would be another $7,500. And I would assume that engineering work would be also about $7,500. So for $15,000, we could, if Pendot approved it, we could add a flashing yellow light to that signal. The status of the project, though, is that it's currently ready to go out for bid. So the specifications for the project, the permits are all in place. In fact, it's probably going to be out for bid later this month. So to add something to that would delay that. That's not to say that we can't do it as a separate project.
Okay. I don't remember ever discussing the flashing yellow lights. Is that a new?
I looked at the history of the Traffic Commission minutes and the Board of Supervisors, looking for Mr. Ralph's name. I couldn't find it over the past three years. I don't recall a discussion, not saying that there wasn't one, but.
I would, I would assume that Pendot has some requirements for the flashing light versus a non-flashing light.
They would have to look at the site distance. And there's concern about the Western Hill that might block.
And would they have, would they probably have looked at that in their recommendation about what they want to put in there?
Had we requested it, yes, they would have looked at it. We didn't request it.
We didn't.
All we requested was the go-to radar and the change the controller, which, if you recall, was the rhythm system, which was connected to traveling into the city, and it just caused some problems.
Would it be possible to change the timing on any of the lights? To make them change more often, maybe when someone's waiting there and there's nothing coming in the other lane, and they want to make a left-hand turn or whatever?
I don't know that this, Perry, I'm going to have to get your help here. I'm not sure that there's, that would be feasible.
I mean, there would have to be a traffic count done on that. And again, that would be a permit change again. So either way, you'd be paying engineering fees for them to submit a plan, you know, to Pendot for them to review. Additionally, too, even with the, the left flashing yellow light, that is also going to require a permit change. So again, that will involve engineering and submittal to Pendot.
When did we, when did we start this? How many years ago?
We had authorized to apply for the grant in 2024, I think probably in March, I'm thinking. I did see those minutes.
And there were multiple lights at that time, right? We were looking at multiple. Wasn't, this wasn't the only light that was updated, right?
The other part of the grant process is Hemlock and Harrisburg Pike. So they're both going to get new controllers.
Right, next one up.
Yeah, the next one up.
Is, do we have any money left over from the high donation?
No.
That's all been spent?
Yes.
Yeah, question. So Mr. Ralph is experiencing this issue right now, but you're saying something's going out to bid that's going to change it, or it's not going to change it?
What's going out for bid is changes to the loop detectors are going to radar, radar on the signal. And the controllers in the boxes for both those signals is going to change.
Okay, so it won't have any
No.
negative or positive impact on what is being experienced now. Okay.
There is potential that taking it off the loop system and having it on the radar system will alleviate some of the traffic concerns through there because the loop system runs based on traffic all the way into Lancaster City, whereas the radar systems will be running based on the traffic at those lights. So until they're installed and we have them running for a period of time, we don't know whether it will have beneficial impacts or not, but that is the expectation, that traffic flows better without the loop system worked into the process.
So question, if we install what we have now and take a wait-and-see approach, is it going to be more than, what I'm hearing from you guys now, it's $15,000. Is that about right?
It is too late to change this project. I would strongly recommend against that. So you're looking at a new project, about $15,000.
So $15,000 for the new project. So my question is, if we move forward with what we have now and do that, and then begin with a new project, that's only $15,000. Adjusting this project is not any less? Or am I totally missing?
Not really, because you'd have, it's the permit process and it's the engineering.
Okay.
We can't, I think what we heard from the traffic engineers, we can't really adjust this project. It would be changing the whole thing and resubmitting and, because it's a, it's a change to the permit as it stands now, different from where we're at now. So it would be basically revamping the current project.
So what, I guess, what about construction? Like if we move forward with this and decide we want to change it, you know, what are we into? Are we, are we talking more money than the $15,000? Are we talking $25,000, $30,000 to change that?
Off the cuff, that was the number that was given to me without any more details. $7,500.
Okay.
But then there's an engineering cost on top of that. You have to do a traffic study. You have to issue or get another permit.
Which they basically would be redoing almost what they did now verbatim, right, and resubmitting it, essentially.
With only one signal instead of both signals, unless you wanted that also at Hemlock, which might be wise as well.
But I am hearing you say that the improvements that we're going to put out for bid next week or begin to install next week, they may make the intersection, and they may improve the situation there anyway, right? Because we're on this.
Logically speaking, that makes sense. What Diane indicated, the engineer didn't feel that there would be much change. So it's a wait-and-see, and see how it does.
Mr. Madonna, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. If we, if we move forward and then make a change, I'm just finding this hard to believe that it's only going to be $15,000.
Well, again, you're looking at some engineering fees, which to, you know, they would have to resubmit a proposal to Pendot to make the change to the flashing yellow left turn arrow. And then again, you're looking at the cost of changing out the, the actual signal head itself. And again, it's, it depends, you know, if Pendot comes back with other questions, the engineer may have to make a second submission, which is pretty much very likely in Pendot's realm. That, that happens all the time. It's kind of rare that you see, you know, one time submit to Pendot. They say, okay, that's, that's fine. Let's do it. They, they always seem to have questions and want you to resubmit. So, I mean, you know, $15,000 could be a good number. Again, it could go more. But trying to change the existing, what we're currently doing, I think green light go grant doesn't permit that, I do not believe, so.
That actually specifically says those two items.
Okay, so there's no advantage then whatsoever to stop doing what we're doing. So really, the only question is, do we move forward with the proposal that was, was brought up to us tonight? My feeling on this is that the, the development there that Mr. Ralph is referring to and is coming from did suffer some major changes. And I, until you explained it, I, I didn't realize that that would be a natural path for you guys to go back to your residence. So I think I'm inclined to look at it. Why don't we find out what the path forward is? Let's continue doing what we're doing. Let's look at what the suggestion would be to put the flashing yellow light in and get more detailed cost and get our ducks in a row and move forward. But I think I would be inclined to kind of solve the problem for that neighborhood if we could.
My guess is it isn't just my neighborhood. I mean, there, I mean, people are going that way to go to Marietta Avenue to go all the way to Stalpers or whatever. They're turning left there. There's no reason in mind that they should be delayed two minutes because of the light. But $15,000 from here on out doesn't seem like a lot.
Well, my fingers are crossed that that number is correct. And we'll do a little bit of vetting on it, and we'll get back to you.
Total guess.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Managers' report.
So we did have an executive session held on July 9th from 6:00 p.m. to 7:20 for the purpose of a legal discussion regarding the coal book validity challenge. The 2025 paving, we had hoped that that would start mid-July. Of course, the weather has pushed that back. Although Perry has been in contact with the contractor, and he is pushing to have that started before August 1st. The Centerville Road project, I think the, the final inspection with the punch list is scheduled for tomorrow. Diane and Perry will be attending that. So we're winding down on that project. The Route 72 and Lititz Road temporary signals, the signals are up. It's my understanding the PPNL electric to the signals, they are waiting for an inspection for that. So they could be flashing within the next few days. They have to flash for a week, and then they're good to go. The Dairy Road Bridge Replacement, we're going to be bidding that project also mid-July. Reminder, we do have two. Reminder, we do have two grants for that, one for 1.1 million and the other for $300,000. We talked about the Church Street Bridge, then Noldorah Park, we talked about. I did want to say that we did work with Lakswama, and we do have an access drive, temporary access drive on Farmingdale Road, and they even put in a trail to get the people to the crosswalk safely. So, that was very good of them to do that. It was done in connection with Public Works, but primarily Lakswama helped out. And Diane has put everything that she can possibly put on social media so that they know that the park is closed, closed to probably mid-November. We did not have a Rec Authority meeting, so there's really no more news on, on the Pro Shop project. Oh, I did want to point out that Diane Garber did successfully complete the PA Certified Public Managers Program at Millersville College. So, she should be congratulated for that. Her capstone was entitled Volunteer Fire Service Preservation Through Consolidation. So, very proud that she got that completed. Kudos to her. And if you haven't been able to read that capstone, it is part of your manager's report that you can pull that up.
Yeah. Yeah, congratulations, Diane. And I looked at the volunteer report or the paper that you did, and I promise I'm going to read it. I think it's like 30 pages, something like that, but yeah.
18, I believe.
18. All right.
We did have some significant vacancies in the Public Works Department. There were three. We hired two. We're holding on the third one until maybe later in the year, if in fact, it's even needed. So, that's, we're pretty much fully staffed at this point. The staff is also working on the winter plowing and getting the contractors lined up and some part-time staff. So, hopefully, that all works out for the best. The Nissley Road Basin, that has been hit hard with the rains that we've had. There are sinkholes that keep developing in that project. Do you want to pull that up if you could? We met with the engineer, the geologist, geologist of what can be done. We are currently over budget by $100,000 because of the sinkhole repairs that are being made. It's unfortunate that this project is going this way. It's, it's an excellent basin. It's doing what it's supposed to do. It's protecting the golf course as best it can, as well as the Church Street and the developments across church. What is being proposed by the engineer, and they have talked to B.R. Kreider, is to fill, refill part of that basin, which is in, in the red. We are standing with our backs to the cell tower, and this is the portion that will be refilled and topsoil put on top of it in hopes that the, this will stop the sinkholes from developing. Everything else in the basin is doing fine. It's functioning well. It's just unfortunate we're over budget. I do have the engineer looking for possible grant funds. Excuse me, we're looking at the cap, the water, waterways people to see if there's any funding there for, to make up the difference. This is the project that help was, was given by West Elmfield Township to get this completed. Unfortunately, they don't have any more money, so we can't go after them for that.
Will there be any other changes to the basin? Will it go deeper in another spot or?
We're hoping not. The theory is that right now, when it, when it fills, it's water sitting on top of it. It's better if there's soil on top of the sinkholes, and that's the theory that with the soil on top, it should stabilize it. And Kreider was there who built it, as well as Scott Hain and the geologist, his geologist looked at it. So, between Kreider giving us soil from another project and Kreider's desire to help the community, we had hoped that that would be the Nolton Church property. That's not going to work out till maybe spring of next year. So, we're looking to him to help us get through this as best we can with his contributions as best he can. We don't have numbers yet, but if, if they're willing to truck in the soil, that's a huge number for us.
Right.
So, unfortunately, it's, it's not the best news, but it's a great project.
Question. Do the garden plots remain intact through all the storms there?
As far as I know, there was no problems with them.
Good.
And I believe Scott Hain at the meeting, MS4 meeting we had earlier this week, mentioned that there's going to be some additional, maybe seeding of the area below the, between the basin and the pad.
Field, yeah.
And the pad. I, I know, I said on the way over here tonight, I looked at that specifically, and it's, yeah, it's pretty rough looking below the pad. The pad actually looks pretty good because they, they, I don't know, they hydroseeded that, or I remember they netted that and stabilized that area and planted it, but the, the area below that, for whatever reason.
Didn't grow very well.
Didn't, either didn't grow, or I'm not sure what happened, but it looks, yeah, it does look pretty rough.
I mean, for, for us, it's actually filling in the basin, which is where we wanted it to fill, but yes, that does need to be stabilized. There'll be a reseeding of that. The bottom of the basin also calls for plugs to be put in, plantings, and they're going to talk to Kreider to scale back on that because the basin itself is doing, the bottom of it is doing so well, and so that would be a credit back to us.
So, we could get some money back there.
Be done. So, both Kreider and our engineer are working together to see, to minimize as much as possible our costs involved with this. But good news is, if you scroll into that picture more, we actually saw two deer over there. So, it's, it's being repopulated.
Good.
That the largest stormwater project that we have in township?
The MSR property is pretty large, the wetlands project. This one's different because this one.
Right.
This is not as natural as the wetlands.
Right.
But it's huge. It's.
It is huge.
Huge basin. He doesn't think that the refilling of the basin, this portion of it, will affect the, the use of it, the. Capacity, thanks.
Okay. That, that was my concern. That's what I was asking about the.
Yeah, he thought that was, that would be fine to fill that. We did have two meeting group reports. The MS4 group, as was indicated, met. We reviewed the MS4 program. We discussed the status of some of our projects, and there is no news on the new MS4 criteria for re-permitting. It's, it's still pending with BEP, so, or EPA. We also had a public safety group meeting. We talked about the changes, changes in the limited leadership that currently exists and the shortage of volunteers at both Hemfield and Royerstown. We are working with a consultant to get a proposal to look at potential solutions to that, those issues. And we also discussed the county hazmat issue and indicated, it's been indicated to us that if there was a hazmat incident in the town, in the county, either Lebanon or Dolphin County will be responding, that the county has arrangements for both of those to be on standby. So, we're fully covered. And that concludes the report unless there's question.
I just have a, a comment or a thought. When we, in regards to the traffic signals, it seems the yellow flashing light is coming more popular in recent years. It seems like it's popping up in more intersections. So, if we have any other signals that are in the works, can we review them to make sure that that flashing light, if it's, if it can be utilized, is part of it?
Yeah. And I think Pendot also supports that, so.
Right.
I'll share that with Mr. Bauer.
Okay. Okay. I have nothing else. Anyone else? Go to your order? Okay. Well, it is 8:42. We are, we will adjourn, and we will not return. Thank you and good night.